Good evening. I'm going to call the August 5th, 2024 School Committee Meeting to order. Tonight, I have the honor of chairing this meeting as Ms. Parenti is not here this evening. I'm going to read this brief statement about the meeting being held remotely as we have one of our members via Zoom. So this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Master and Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all of our participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording here tonight, and we're also recording for our purposes of the minutes. Is anyone on the call or in the audience who's planning to record? Nope. Okay.
Just want to indicate that Matt's online and he's in.
Yes. I just want to note that I am here in person with my fellow School Committee members, Carrie, me, Michelle, Air, Ally Anderson, and then we have Matt Cosman, who is participating virtually. So we're going to be taking roll call votes for all of our votes while he is on Zoom this evening. Okay. All right. So the first order of business we have tonight is Item 2. We have approval of minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on July 15, 2024.
I'll second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. So Carrie?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle?
Aye.
And then Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. We have one more set of minutes. Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on July 24, 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope. All right. All those in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay. So moving over to Item 3. This is the portion of the meeting that we have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments on new business items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, if you have anything related to new business, can you please just hang back and we'll get your questions then? But otherwise, if you have anything that's not new business, can you please raise your hand now and let me know if you'd like to be recognized, and then I'll read a statement if we have anyone who has any questions. Is there anyone online? Nope. All right. I don't see any hands raised. So we will move on to Agenda Item 4, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Adams?
So a short report tonight. One, a reminder that we're excited and making preparations for the new school year. This is a reminder for our families that the first full day of school for grades 1 through 12 is on Wednesday, September 4, which is a slight change because of the election day on Tuesday, the primary election day on Tuesday. The first day of school is Wednesday, September 4, for grades 1 through 12. Kindergarteners will start the following day, on Thursday, September 5. And the first day for preschool and pre-kindergarten programs is Monday, the following Monday, September 9. We are excited and making many preparations for the beginning of the school year, including under the direction of Matt Meehan, who's here tonight, who's going to be presenting on an item on the agenda tonight. All of the schools are undergoing their annual summer deep cleaning. In addition, there are multiple preventative maintenance measures underway. Matt will be here back on August 26 at the School Committee Meeting to give an outline of all of the updates on facilities made during the summer. We're also working on outlining professional development and plans for convocation for the beginning of school in August. We also, you'll hear tonight a little bit more from Heather Cashman, Communications Specialist, on our new website, but the new website was launched on July 24. We are excited that it facilitates, it will facilitate mass communication with families, including text, email, and social media. The new provider also ensures that we're ADA compliant. In addition, the new platform provides a mobile app that can be downloaded from the Apple Store or Google Play. We'll be continuing to promote those efforts as the school year starts with families in the upcoming months. I also provided a personnel report, which indicates any resignations or retirements, as well as positions that are to be filled. There are no appointments listed. We are working and have appointed quite a few folks, but their hire date is August, beginning of school. So you'll see those reflected on the next Personnel Report with all of the new hires for this new year. If there's any question, just a comment. I love the new app. I've already downloaded it. It's great.
You get notification. You can get notifications. There's a lot of features that we're excited to roll out in the next couple of weeks.
I think it's going to be great. The families are going to appreciate that, definitely. Okay. Any questions? All right. Moving on to Item 5, Communications. Communications received by the Superintendent? Nope. Okay. 5.2, which is Student Communications. There are no students. There you are, enjoying their summer. So Item 5.3 is Other Communications. Anything received by the School Committee Members? None? Okay. All right. So we will now move on to unfinished business. There's none. So then we will proceed to Item 7, which is New Business. And just wanted to ask the Committee if everyone's okay if we move one item up on the agenda. Item 7.9, so these, Matt and HSP don't have to sit through many Agenda Items until that. So if everyone's okay with that, we will move up to 7.9, which is to approve the donation of contracted services for the demolition of the existing field maintenance storage and concession building at the Hingham High School and appoint the Superintendent as signatory on the contract, act as appropriate. So Matt, Meehan, would you like to come up?
Sure.
Welcome, Matt. Do you hear First?
Yes. Welcome.
Appreciate it. We have a contract between Pompeo and HPC, which is donating full services for the demolition of the existing field concession building, which is where the new dock building will exist. The demolition is fully donated to the Town of Hingham. Hingham has no liability of costs whatsoever. I am monitoring since the beginning of this project very closely on how this is moving forward. We pass it through legal, through central office. Everything seems to be cleared. Legal cleared the contract between Pompeo, Hingham Sports Partnership, and Hingham Public School District. There's a lot of technical issues with that. Everything seems to be cleared. Facilities also has been out to the site several times. We walked through. The building is completely empty for the first time in quite some time. We have a storage deficit, which we are actively working on, and we have some viable solutions. So we're moving forward with that as well. And Facilities completely says absolutely yes to this. We think it's a very good idea to get that building down before school starts. At the very least, parking will be available for quite some time until the new building project exists, and there won't be a lot of disruption to education, which is really what my priority is. If you have any questions about how that agreement moves forward, it would be great to ask them now, or if anybody in the public has it, it would be great. But we are fully behind the donation of these services to the Town of Hingham and Hingham Public Schools.
And as Matt indicated, this was run through John Cossland, Town Council, and it is similar to another donation the town received, the contract. So we're basing off this contract based upon his advice, as well as other contracts done by the town.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question. Just timing wise, you mentioned trying to get it done before the start of school, just so there's no disruption. Will that also be manageable with sports practices starting the two weeks prior? Will there be any kind of rejuggling of places?
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the sports practices or camps have already begun. This project will be very limited in scope to the existing site. And I've already outlined kind of what kind of scope the project will take land area-wise. Pompeo, who's a very reputable contractor in the region, actually the state, has been involved, and he said he can probably most likely get that building down in three days. The impact will be absolutely minimal. We are looking at some impacts on utilities, irrigation, which we think we can be really mitigated before that even, the demolition even begins. So I don't think there will be any impact on any athletics, the field, or even the school opening at all.
Excellent. Thank you. And I know the track students use that building a lot. They have already said their goodbyes.
Yes. They're going to have a beautiful facility moving forward. Just to, you know, tearing down a building also is also the birth of a new building. We ensured today that the Hingham Sports Partnership, moving forward, also is donating much of their funding for this building. We, they reassured us today that it will be fully funded and built. So we are very happy moving forward, because I was, being new and being an engineer, I was worried about tearing down a building before it was actually in place, to be put in place, and they assured us that everything was fine moving forward. So I don't think we have to worry about that either.
Thank you.
Just thank you to Pompeo for this donation. It's very generous, and to HSP for all of your work on that, too. And welcome. Thank you for doing this.
I love my job.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Tom. HSP, and welcome to Matt. I think this is going to be great for the for the district and for the high school, and it's going to go quick, I think. The whole process is quick.
We look like, it's looking like it will be up before the end of November.
That'll be, wow, that's great. Yes, well, thank you to the folks who are here from HSP. Just wanted to give a shout out to you. So thank you very much. Okay. Are there any questions from the public? Nope. Okay. I will, I guess we'll do, so I'll take a motion?
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the donation of contracted services for the demolition of the existing field maintenance storage and concession building at Hingham High School and appoint the Superintendent signatory on the contract.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay. Question has passed. Great. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next up is Item 7.1, which is to discuss the Plymouth River School Improvement Plan for 2024, 2026, and act as appropriate. We will call up Greg Lamont, and I also just want to give a welcome to Tara. Is it Boeing? Is that how you pronounce it? Thank you. The new principal from South School. I think this is your first School Committee meeting as well, so welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Greg.
So we'll go over the school improvement plan, and I just wanted to share one other thing before that. So just a quick project update for everyone to see that we did, we were working on rebuilding the columns at Plymouth River. They're coming along well. Last time Matt and I spoke, they were a little bit ahead of schedule, which is always nice to hear, especially after we went through the Windows Project. So this is what they looked like before, and as you can see, the peestones on them, and they were sort of rotting and going away. And, wrong way, sorry. That's what the new ones look like. So they have a nice new look, and then these will get painted at some point. So they're well on their way to making the school look a lot nicer and inviting than than it seems like it was with the falling apart pieces. So thank you to everyone who made this happen, because it makes the school look a lot better. Appreciate it. And then we'll go into the school improvement plan for 2024, 26. So for that school improvement plan, again, for the mission of Plymouth River School, where children are treasured, is to foster a love of learning and an innovative cooperative climate, which empowers all students to be competent, productive, caring, and responsible citizens. So as we think about that mission statement for Plymouth River, right now, School Council members, we don't have any, because we haven't done sort of nominations for parents, and so just right now, we don't have teacher reps, parents reps. I have Ally there, because she was the last one there. I don't know if you guys will be changing or not changing schools, but as of right now, I have Ally on there, and that will be updated once we get our teacher and parent reps. So we have three goals that I'm going to go over tonight. One is academics, to enhance educational opportunities by optimizing teaching and learning, and I'll get more into that in a moment. Goal number two is a social emotional goal, is to enhance a multi-tiered system of support to effectively address our students' social emotional needs by collaborating with the Social Emotional Behavior Academy, which we'll be participating in Year 1 of this year. And then goal number three is connections, to foster a positive inclusive school culture that supports the well-being and academic success of all students, staff, and stakeholders. And so I will get more into detail for those. So for the first one, for academics, enhancing educational opportunities by optimizing teaching and learning. It's aligned with the Hingham Public School Strategies Plan, Spoke Number 2. Culturally responsive teaching and learning strat, and the strategic objective, ensure student success through a line to high quality PK through 12-plus curriculum, innovative research practices, and data-informed instruction. So we're in the third year of UDL, so as we're in the third year of UDL, we're going to put a focus on multiple means of engagement. So that is going to be, resources we'll be using is Time Glory Kazna and the UDL Academy to work on that. Professional learning communities, or you'll also, again, hear me call them PLCs. We'll do deeper dives into PLCs, really looking at multiple means of engagement. Multiple means of engagement was one of the things that was suggested to me as part of my evaluation to dive deeper into, so I wanted to make sure that we did look further into that for the staff and for everyone. And then time for teachers to do observations, teaching other teachers doing UDL. Sometimes UDL is seen as, oh, that's just best practices, and as we learn more and more, it's not best practices. It's how do you build and take down the barriers for the students before they, the students are assigned a task? So really, you know, honing in on some of our teachers who have really taken on that UDL mindset and having teachers be allowed and able to do those other classrooms. The, refine the master schedule to implement a more cohesive schedule and maximize time on learning. I met with grade levels, then I met with the special ed team, I met with the specialists, so music, art, PE, and then I met with the reading and math specialists, and we really looked at each one and said, what I said to them, give me your best top three schedules of what it would look like for you that would make the most sense for the students and for your, the structure on how you would teach that classroom, and then remade the schedule for a third time, speaking with them, as I like, making it this time, we're hoping to not make it again, and to be able to now follow that throughout the rest of the time, and not reinventing the wheel all the time, and now having a master schedule that has everybody's input, has information of where they want certain places to be, and I tried to get their first choice. If it wasn't their first choice, make it work for the second choice, knowing that there's multiple moving parts that have to happen. The next one was hold data meetings to ensure student success and reflection of scope and sequence pacing guide. So those were when we have our PLCs, when we're meeting with the reading and literacy specialists, and when the PLCs with math specialists, really looking at the beginning, middle-of-year data, looking at data that's happening during those stages of you just finished a math test, where are kids falling? How can we help them out in that sort of way? Looking at data from MCAS, and really taking a look this year, we noticed it with one of our grade levels, that they didn't need, there were fewer kids that needed to be pulled out for services to help them in reading, but more students that needed to be enriched. So how are we building that MTSS system to not only help those that who need help, but how do we also help those that need enrich? So we did, in one of our grade levels, we did a novel study for a group of students who were far much better benchmarked. They were testing out of I-ready, and we said, okay, what's the next thing that we need to do? So we want to start looking at this for a lot of our grade levels, and sort of see like, we always keep looking at the bottom, but we also have to look at the top to make sure that we are being, you know, maximizing that time for students and making sure that students aren't sitting there bored. We are enriching them with what, with what's learning in the classroom. And then create time for coaching for math and reading specialists. The math and reading specialists met with Laurie Kazna, who also did a coaching talk with, with our specialists, and really finding the time to begin that coaching cycle, so to work again with Laurie, who's met with those specialists, and then work with the specialists on how are they going to find that time to meet with the teachers and start doing some coaching cycles to help them get better. And that's one of those things where it's sort of letting it be like, this is not evaluatory. This is for you and the specialist to really help you get better at your craft. So that falls all underneath the goals and goal one for academics. Any question on that, on goal one? All right. And we'll move to goal number two. Goal number two, as I explained, we are joining the Social, Emotional, and Behavior Academy that we were accepted into. As part of that academy, you know, we want to really look at, as we've talked about, we've built a really strong academic MTSS structure, and now we want to look at that on the opposite side. We want to look at a multi-tiered system of support for social, emotional, and behavioral support, and this academy will help us do that with the three years that we have with them, and then hopefully, moving forward. Again, it is attached to the Strategic Plan, Spoke Number 3. Healthy, Equitable, and Inclusive Communities, and the strategic objective is to cultivate equitable and inclusive environments that promote a sense of belonging, to allow for social, emotional, and academic wellness. So first thing was to join the Social, Emotional, and Behavior Academy 3-year commitment. We were accepted into that, so that one is already done. Katie, Derek, and I have already met with them once already to talk about what that structure is going to look like. The next one is work on the articulation and implementation of social, emotional, and behavior multi-tiered systems of support. So this is going to be done through the SEB, or the Social, Emotional Behavior. You'll hear me call it the SEB Academy Partnership. With that, we have to complete a self-assessment for the academy, and we also have to complete a self-reflection rubric. From there, they will sort of help us in the way that we need to, where we need our work, not only in the district, but in our specific school. The next is to complete a mental health, strengths, and needs-based assessment to better utilize student data. Again, that is coming from SEB Academy, so they'll give us the assessment to do. We'll have to do that academy and then work with them to sort of see where we fall and where our next steps are in order for PRS to move forward. Looking at new SEL curricula and support teachers in the existing SEL curricula, as you all know, we use Toolbox. But as talking multiple times, and we've, as elementary principals, Toolbox works to a certain age, and then it starts to lose its flair. So what can we use? And it's mostly end of third grade through fifth grade. Yes, I know, use my breathing tool. Yes, I know, use my patience tool. So sort of how do we invigorate that, or what can we learn from the SEB Academy that's going to help us reach those students as well? So we'll still be teaching them Toolbox, but also what else can we give them in order to help them be successful? And then choose, we have to choose a priority focus for the academy. I'm looking at PBIS and bringing PBIS back into the school's positive behavior intervention strategies. So with that, we want to look at our old matrices, what it means to be polite, responsible, and safe on the bus, in the cafeteria, in the hallways, in the classroom. So bringing out those matrices, but now looking at like, what is post-pandemic, what does that look like to be in the hallways, to be safe, to be responsible, to be polite? So we'll use those, those rubrics that were sort of, have been put away, take them back out, dust them off, and then give them a new revamp as part of the process as we move forward. With the SEB Academy, they would also assign us, they have people who are skilled in six areas. One of them is in PBIS, so they would give us a person skilled, very highly knowledgeable in PBIS, to help us with that. Also, we'll attend monthly one-hour SEB monthly coaching cycles. So once a month, we get on, online, and it's a one-hour coaching cycle for the district. And then there are eight 90-minute virtual also sessions that we'll be partaking in, and so that'll be something that I also want to build a team to take part of, so it's not me and Melissa doing that. It's a, it's a, it's a team effort, so I will need to build that team out, and I will put that out at the beginning of the year. And then the next piece I want to talk about is One School, One Book. So this actually came from my specialist, so my art, music, gym teacher, all of them asked to meet with me at the end of the school year and says, we want to do something on social emotional learning. We want to do some lesson plans together, and we want to do it on a book that all of us will do. So the book is called My Shadow is Purple. And so it's real, the book is, when you go through and you get to read the book, they're on the, the link that you get, if you click on the actual picture, there's a link to the auto version of the book. If it doesn't go through, because the way it was downloaded onto PowerPoint, I can send you the Google slide. But really, it's about like, everyone has a different shadow. Everyone is different, but you all belong here. And that is sort of our message that we've always been pushing, is that everyone belongs, and, and so the teachers, their overarching goal is so that every classroom gets this book, one, My Shadow is Purple. And then their overarching goal is to, for this program, is to invite every student and staff member, read the same book, one that supports social and emotional learning through its theme and engaging in a, engaging in multiple different ways. The specialist team will design a variety of lessons specific to their field around the book, so they'll bring art in there. They'll bring literature and, literature from the library, digital media, gym, all those sort of pieces to let everyone, to sort of bring out, like, you all have something great to bring to the table, and don't ever feel that you don't have anything good to bring to the table, because you do. They came to me with the opportunity, and I was just like, this sounds fantastic. Let's do it. And the lessons will create opportunities that will enrich our understanding of ourselves and others, and help build community. The program, we're hoping, will cultivate a community at Plymouth River that celebrates all of the students and our, and grows empathy for those all around them. So it's the first time we're trying it, but we're hoping for it to be successful. And then we'll look at another book the following year as, as we move forward. Any, any questions on goal number two? Okay. So number three is communication, to foster a positive and inclusive school culture that supports the well-being and academic success of all students, staff, and stakeholders. It aligns with Spoke 1 and Spoke Number 3, and then the adjectives you can see are with them. So what I want to do there is I want to take, there's a couple of things I want to do. Conduct anonymous surveys among staff to assess job satisfaction, morale, perceived level of engagement. So at the end of the year, part of our job in the evaluation cycle is to ask them to give me, you know, feedback that is anonymous. And what I'm doing is I'm just taking that, and I'm spreading it out over the year. I want, I want to like, dipstick throughout the year. I'll give them time either during PLCs or during faculty meetings in order to do this, but to really sort of see, where are we feeling as a community at PRS, and what is it that Melissa and I have to do to like, help build the morale? Like, what are we, what are the missing parts, missing pieces that we may not see every day that they can give us that feedback for? I think the only way that we grow is by getting that feedback, but it's, but instead of just end of year, I want to do it like, four times a year, to sort of figure that, where we're at with that. Implement quarterly student focus groups to discuss feelings of belonging, connection with peers and staff, and overall school climate. This is something I want to do with from third grade to fifth grade, and have those conversations with those, those students. This is something that I really want to bring up at the first School Council meeting, to sort of see like, what do parents feel about, like, what are the proper questions to ask? What are the proper questions to sort of see where we want to go with it? We'll have some, I'll have some of my own that we have already thought about, but also getting that input from parents and teachers to help us make sure that we are making those connections with peers and the students to understand how they feel in the school. So monitor disciplinary referrals related to bullying and negative behavior incidents on a monthly basis. We've created a spreadsheet that Melissa and I use that anytime we see a student is to like, mark down what it is, why we saw them, and are we seeing a behavior that's, that's trending? Is it always on the bus? Is it always on the playground? If it's on the playground, how do we fix that? We sort of came to a tweaking of it last year and had a really good conversation at School Council of some things that we could do about it, and now I think we have the right, right sort of process to move it to its next step. Evaluate new website and how to use more effectively with all stakeholders. So that's going to be, she doesn't know yet, but I have her in partnership with Heather, is sort of looking at how many things are we, like, how many people are reaching PRS's website? How many people are on it? What, what do we need to do? Melissa and I now knowing that we can, with the new website, we can like, take a picture in the classroom and immediately, right from thrill share, throw it onto Instagram and Facebook and, and get more engagement within. Like, are people looking at it? Are people seeing it? We can also see those numbers by just looking at those pictures, so. And that's a one-way communication, and we know that, but it's still a way to get people to see what's happening with inside the school building during the school hours that they may not otherwise see. Or when they ask their kids, what'd you do at school today? And they say, nothing. The kids say, oh, no, you Next is assess parent satisfaction as perceived involvement on a monthly basis through one question and a monthly surveys in the Smore. So what we're thinking of there is for parent feedback is sort of getting ideas, like, in September's, the end of month, September's, is like, how well do you think that the smooth, how smooth was the transition of opening of school? Good, bad? Like, we're just going to leave it as like, a good or bad, a yes or no, and then leave a spot to like, leave feedback. So then we can take that constructive feedback and do once, one once a month. We're thinking about one for, like, how did parent-teacher conferences go? You know, now that we have parent-teacher conferences, we have them on in October, then there's a two-week span, and then we have them in November. So you can sort of get all those kids within that two-week period. Do you think that was a better plan? How did it go? And then give us some feedback on that. It also helps us, but it also helps the district in moving forward with planning those sort of ideas and getting parent feedback that you don't normally hear. So it's a way for them to communicate with us in a two-way sort of way. And then what we want to also do is, we always talk about being polite, responsible, and safe in school, but we want to make a polite, responsible, and safe award that each grade level, once a month, chooses a kid who is exuberant what polite means, or who is exuberant what responsible, or what safe is, sitting down with our faculty council in order to make that determination. What does it mean to be polite? Like, how are we going to choose that student? And then choose one from each grade level. And then at an all-school meeting, say for the month of September, this student in kindergarten was exuberantly polite by doing this, 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 and they get the award. So we have to create the award and figure out what those, sort of, what it means to be polite, responsible, and safe in order to be able to then move forward and give that student that recognition. So that is what I got for you, unless you have any questions for me?
Two things. One is, I love that one book, one school initiative. I think that's going to be across disciplines. It's a great idea, and I love that it keeps them the staff, too. And then I just wanted to commend you for the two-way communication part of that goal. We've talked about it a lot, and we've worked a lot as a district, I think, to get better at pushing information out and getting information, but to ask students, staff, families for their input and take that in, and to do it throughout the year, I think it's great. So.
Thank you.
Michelle?
This was a great presentation, and I really like the work that you're doing here. I've been thinking a lot over the summer about the social, emotional needs of children and staff as well. And one thing that I started realizing that, you know, schools, schools are going to solve these problems, right? We're not going to magically eliminate anxiety and depression in anyone, right? But what you can do is make your building inclusive and make children feel safe and belonging. And some of the things you're doing, like the one book, one school, I just, it's really great stuff. And I think to Carrie's point about the staff being involved, some things I was reading over the weekend, we're talking about that, what they're starting to find in education is that a lot of the social, emotional, learning is helping the staff and the faculty in the buildings become better regulators of themselves and understand it. So I think all these things that you're doing are really right on, right on track. It's a great.
Yeah. Anyone else?
No.
Anyone, anyone on the public have any questions? Online, raise your hand?
I'm here.
Nope, doesn't look like we have anyone, or thank you very much. Greg, we just have to do a quick motion?
Yes, I think we do need to accept.
And this is acceptance as opposed to approval?
Yes, yes.
I will make a motion to accept the Plymouth River School Improvement Plan for 2024 through 2026.
I'll second.
Okay, and now Matt is in person, so we can just do all in favor, aye, and all opposed, say no?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item, I'll get my bearings here, which is 7.2, which is to approve the elementary student handbook. I'm guessing that is you as well, Greg, so.
So the four elementary principals, Jonathan, Matt, myself, and Tara, met in July, and we fixed a couple of things in the student handbook, so I'll go through them with you. One was we added the Crown Act to the handbook, to make table contents under 1A. The non-disciplinary policy statement was updated to include language that reflects the Crown Act. So that's been added to the handbook. We did have language for emergency removal in the elementary handbook, but we were given some updated language to use more concise language, so we did update that as well. So that's been added to the elementary handbook. Student attendance notification, we added in a link to a tardy, a tardy and absent letter for parent reference. So if, when they read through the handbook, if they click on that link, they can see this is what a letter looks like. And also, the language on the letter was updated to reflect Mass General Law and defined what excessive absences meant by DESI, just so everyone understood what that definition of excessive absences meant. We also noticed in the lunch program, when we talked about lunch program, it did not reflect that we now have free lunches. So we changed that, and the link has been updated to reflect the free lunches are available to all students, and a link to the school nutrition and fitness webpage has also been added there. So we not only said school lunches are now free, but if you want to look at what school lunches are, how to find them, it's on this link here. So we added that link on, to the digital handbook. And then lastly, we were advised and saw that after the middle and high school went, that they were asked to add the MGL laws, 37H, 37H and a half, and 37H and three-quarters to the handbook. So we did add that to the handbook and the elementary handbook as well, under the contents of their discipline, as it previously was not in the handbook. So those were the changes that we made to the elementary handbook.
Does anyone in the committee have any questions?
Michelle? One, any time you think. I just want to thank you for updating all of this, and particularly the lunch program. I think it's on the top of page 40. It might have just been carried over, but it still says to qualify, fill out the form.
Okay, I can fix, I can fix that.
Okay, perfect.
Top of page 40.
Yeah, I think it's top of page 40.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Anyone online?
No.
All right, I will take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the elementary family student handbook with the revision suggested.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion passed.
And I made it through, as Katie would say, most senior elementary principal presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you for being here, Tara.
All right, so next we will move on to item 7.3, which is to discuss revisions to the high school handbook and act as appropriate.
Yep, just briefly, we just wanted to update the handbook with the revised clubs as part of the collective bargaining agreement. So the ones that are highlighted are the additional ones that were not in the last handbook. We also will need to do a revision of Title IX, because the regulations, the policies and procedures have changed. So we'll likely come back in the next school committee meeting with revised procedures to update all of our documents with new procedures. The impact of Title IX is primarily more on the procedural piece, that our procedures need to be updated. And policy is meeting later this week to begin that discussion, so.
Yeah, and those changes, just, it's like August 1st, they just put it.
Yes, and the guidance, yeah, and the guidance from the federal government with the policy and procedures came like, you know, a couple days just before August 1st, so.
I will make a motion to accept the revisions to the Hingham High School handbook.
Second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion approved. All right, we will move on to item 7.4, which is to review the medical and behavioral health emergency response plan for each school. So first, I will pass it over to you, Margaret?
Yes. So you have a plan for each school. And just some background, state law requires that the school committee approve emergency medical response plan and update these as needed. This is per Mass General Law, Chapter 69, Section 8A. That was enacted in 2012. The statute was amended in '22 to include behavioral health medical emergencies as well. It must include protocols for contacting parents and guardians when there is a behavioral health personnel or emergency for their particular child. We use, the principals used the documents from the state, the model plans from the state, and completed those. So each of the plan includes elements such as the way that, in the case of an emergency, that there's a communication system in place, how to determine medical or behavioral emergency health response time to any location on the school campus, contacts and telephone numbers, protocols for informing parents and guardians, safety precautions in case of, to prevent injuries, training in CPR and first aid, indication of location and training for automated external depressurators as well, and information about behavioral mobile crisis teams as well. So each of the plans you'll find that are quite similar and a little different depending on the specific location and site. Your vote is required by school committee, and then we'll submit these to the state for their approval.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the committee have any questions?
No.
Is there anyone online that has any questions? No? Okay, I will take a motion.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion for each individual school, or can we do them all together?
I think we can do them all together.
Do them all together.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to accept the medical and behavioral health emergency response plans for all schools.
All second?
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. We will, next up is item 7.5, which is to receive an update on the 2023-2024 communication plan. And then our communications director, Heather Cashman, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm actively using my breathing tool.
This is the wizard behind the website. She should wear a wizard hat and.
Yes, sure. It still has its quirks, which is, it's expected, but it's definitely moving along. But I'll get into that in just a sec. The first, am I supposed to click? Oh. So these are just the analytics over the past school year. So what this is comparing is the school year from the 23-24 school year and the year prior. So all of these I ran from September 1st until June 18th. So these are comparisons, like I said, so in each parentheses, you'll see the first number is this past school year, and then the year before is that second number. So all positive analytics, which is always great to see. The biggest one I'll start with, 450% higher Facebook reach, just meaning that we reached that many more users, that many more users saw our content, 52% more Facebook page visits, 32% increase in Instagram posts. And that's, as you could, those tiles right there, what's actually going on the feed, those individual posts. And then 6% increase in Instagram reach, 44% more Instagram page visits. Those are the general key indicators for social media. Website, usually the statistics are pretty stagnant for a website, but this past school year, without the new website, but just making those general updates, we saw a significant increase. So 23% in terms of, you know, web traffic is 150,000 more times someone went to the website. So I think that's pretty impressive, definitely a team effort with that one. And just making sure that the information is more accessible and basically people can count on the website to find what they need. So that definitely was a strong indicator of that. We sent 67 district emails as opposed to 40 the prior year, and then we sent out 35 press releases as opposed to 28 the prior year. So, so the communications plan that I presented last September outlined three goals, and within each goal, there were several objectives. And then under those objectives, there's these action steps. So these are really just the deliverables that were completed. And this isn't all the action steps, it's just basic overview to give you an idea. So this goal, create effective two-way communication between the district and schools and community stakeholders that's ongoing, and that will always be a goal that we strive for. One of the pieces that I focused on this year was branding and really pushing to make sure we had that consistent branding across really anything external-facing. So any, those graphics on social media, anything on the website, any flyers or handouts, we're just making sure that we have the correct colors, the correct fonts, and the correct logos. The old wheel will always pop up, like, in my nightmares as well. But it's an ongoing project. And, you know, these examples down here, the flyers, those are ones that like, came from the communications department as new materials, new assets. But it's ongoing, finding those older documents that just need that new logo swapped out. We also increased communication to prospective employees, and that was through really general outreach at recruitment fairs and through branded materials and targeted campaigns. Example of the targeted campaign would be highlighting that there was a job fair multiple times on social media, and bringing employees through those graphics, through those handouts at job fairs to hangumschools.org/employment. That was our URL that we used a lot this past school year. And that employment opportunities page is in the top five for most highly-traffic pages. So there's literally thousands of views on just that single page. So that's, and that page is all of the employment opportunities that are open right now. So that is good. The district also performed a special education audit and shared the results with the community, and also held several coffee and conversations to encourage feedback and strengthen that two-way communication, strengthen that dialogue. All right, so goal two, optimize communications technology to meet the evolving needs of the school community. This goal definitely, like other goals, are all driven by those key performance indicators. It's all data-driven. So these decisions that we made over the past school year were driven simply by the survey that we put out in June 2023, and just ongoing, you know, looking at social media engagement, those website metrics, looking at the open rates on emails and things like that. So just, this is generally an overview of those completed action steps. And like Dr. Adams was mentioning, we did roll out the new website, and Jen loved the enthusiasm for the app. But over the course of, so in June 2023, we did that survey, and we found there was quite a bit of dissatisfaction from the website. And that was like, results-driven, but everybody anecdotally had heard that, you know, some sort of thing about not liking the website. So over the last school year, we formed a communications technology committee. We demoed three different communications platforms, and then we ultimately selected Thrill Share, which is owned by Aptige, and that's the new website you see right now. So that's the new website that's kind of rolling out this next school year. But over the course of the school year, I tried hard to optimize the website and the website pages for mobile phones. So there's a live feed feature that's kind of like blog posting for the website on the homepage to give those quick updates. Tried to get the webpages to shorten those paragraphs, make them a little bit easier to read, things like that. Updated, worked on SEO and webpage enhancements, nitty-gritty. It's to help it come up better on Google, essentially. So all those pages now have meta descriptions and keywords. So that will be displaying in the next few weeks, that Google has kind of a whole process when you switch website platforms. So you won't see that work right now, but we should in the next few weeks when they do their URLs and updates. And then just general action steps, a bunch that we did for information sharing, shared an important dates one-pager, posted graphics on social media and the website for early releases and important dates, reformatted social media descriptions, so basically people would read them. My guinea pig was my wife, and I would show her, you know, social media posts, and I'd be really proud of it, because. be really proud of it, because, you know, I spent time working on this little article, basically, and I'd show it to her and she'd say, "I stopped reading after the first sentence." That was too much, too many sentences altogether, so that was, that was good, it was very helpful feedback. I broke, I really started breaking up those, uh, social media posts, using emojis, making easier language, um, less detail, um, and I think that's definitely, um, could, is a reason for, um, higher social media engagement, for sure. Um, yeah, and, let me see here. Yeah, and then, uh, this past school year, I actually managed to post, uh, five times a week on Facebook and Instagram, that was, uh, that was an objective on the communications plan, and that, uh, was successful, um, so that definitely helps with engagement and, uh, keeping the, uh, school pages on everyone's algorithm. Um, so if you're scrolling your page and you don't see it, or a page that you wish, maybe they're not posting enough, um, so that's, that's really the driver behind that, is so people are seeing it consistently. Um, yes. This is what the new website looks like. If you haven't seen it, I think you're fired. Um, so, uh, this is just the homepage right now. Um, the, uh, this is just a little bit, it's kind of hard to see, but, uh, the new website's on the left and the current website's on the right, you can just, it's an example of the visual difference between the two platforms, you know, there's consistent font spacing, colors and things like that. Um, and then here's an example of what the new website mobile view is like, it's a little bit hard to see on the slides, or it's because I'm not wearing my glasses, um, but you can see, you know, about 10 items on one screen, whereas on the right, how it used to be, you'd have to scroll for days to find, you know, the one that was at the bottom. Um, so just simple things like that go a long way. Uh, another side-by-side website example, um, this was, um, an objective over the course of the year, there were a lot of pages that just had PDFs embedded on them, um, and that was a problem for two reasons, one, uh, it's not ADA compliant, and screen readers can't read PDFs, um, so that was a, a major problem with that, um, and it's not as engaging in terms of like the website content and, and, uh, as opposed to having text there, so, um, we went through, you know, over the course of last year, through all of the pages, you know, fast fax, PDF, copying all of that and putting it into the webpage, so now when you search, you're finding those keywords, screen readers, uh, can read it for those with visual impairments and things like that. This is the new app, it's on Jen's phone, don't know about everybody else, but yes, it's in the App Store or Google Play. And, um, Greg, Greg mentioned it, and Dr. Adams mentioned it, um, Thrill Share is the new communication software. So, is there a little, ooh, okay, so these are the buttons that you'll see within Thrill Share, and really what those buttons are is, uh, the different forms of communication that you can push out. So, in this area, you write your message, so this is just an example, happy first day of school, you can put it on the website, which is live feed, you could do Instagram, Facebook, send a push notification, a text, a phone call, and an email. I, we won't be texting everybody happy first day of school because there are kids at school, um, but i- it's definitely a, a great opportunity and tool to, i- it's a unified platform, so you, like those, um, simultaneous updates, it, to paint a picture at 6:00 AM on a snow day, how it used to be is you'd have to update every platform, and by the end of you updating the platform, it's like 6:20, so those who were going to social media, you know, didn't really have anything until 6:20. You had a phone call at 6:05, but you don't have a landline, so anyway, there, there were issues there. Um, now at, at 6:00 AM, I'll be having this queued up, and I'll be hitting, uh, publish, and it should all, all happen simultaneously.
We've come a long way from phone trees.
Yes.
We have to watch the news.
Well, you still can do that. So, goal three, uh, it was better support, is better support students and families during transition years. Um, this largely is based on increasing outreach, uh, of special events, transitional events, um, and, and resources that folks, uh, have access to but might not know about it. So, the completed action steps were to make targeted marketing campaigns for preschool open house or middle school open house, and making sure that we are reaching that target market, um, to make sure they, they know, um, what resources are available to them, what kind of events are there, um, in all in a timely fashion. And, uh, this is a, an example of one of the completed action steps, the school counseling department, and Stacy Flue, it worked really hard on updating the school counseling website, um, so th- this is a part of our website now, they used to have a Weebly that was, uh, kind of clunky and hard to navigate, um, but they worked hard on, you know, putting it on our website, and this page has a lot of, um, a lot of page views and, and click-through rates and things like that, so the students are definitely accessing it. And then next, next steps, um, we're going to roll out the app and notification of direct texting and phone calls, um, that's, will come through a, uh, marketing campaign, uh, right now, the, uh, this is not really important to share, but anyway, these, the styling of the marketing materials is a little bit off, so we're, we haven't come out with the marketing campaign yet, but the materials we should have by this Friday, and you'll start to see, um, basically the tagline, it's everything hanging of public schools in your pocket, so feel free to use that. Um, and so over, over the next few weeks, months, we're just going to continue to train all of those, um, website users or anybody who's going to be using the communication software to communicate with, um, you know, families or staff. Um, and concerns are naturally going to come up, um, and really, what, what I've told people is it's a team effort, so if you see a broken link or you see something that's, that's wrong, or you're having air, please reach out to me, um, send me an email, you're not bothering me, um, it's, it's the only way we can really make sure that everything is, is where it should be, um, is if we're all kind of paying attention. But as soon as those come up, that's a priority, like that's the first thing, um, we're doing, is fixing those broken links as soon as we hear about them. Um, and then, uh, further, furthering outreach of events and highlighting those school events, um, and just strengthening that outreach by more, posting more often, um, you know, for, for an event, sometimes people have to hear it five different times to remember that it's happening, um, so definitely strengthening, um, outreach for those events. That is all.
That's great.
Questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Good stuff.
I just have a comment, just a huge thank you, it's a massive undertaking to move everything over to a new website, so I know how hard you and everyone else have been working on this, and it's, um, an ongoing process, so we appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just, uh, quickly add before, um, just going back to when we were talking through the budget, that, um, that this change over from the web, from one website to the other is cost neutral.
Yes, it was, um, yes, um, it is cost neutral, and in the long run, will likely cost less than the past website.
Yes.
Carrie?
Uh, yeah, no, it's, thank you for this and for all of your work, and I've been, I've been around for a long time, um, before you, you joined us and before all this work happened, and I, I just want everyone to under, to realize how much, by making the information accessible to everyone and making it, you know, easy for people to find, it's taking, it takes a lot of work off of the principals and the staff at school, too, um, and lets them devote more time, student-facing time, so I just, it's, I don't know, I really appreciate it, having seen the evolution of it over this period. I guess my one, my one question is, um, as far as next steps, have you talked about crisis communication at all with the team, um, because things are gonna, I mean, in every school district, things come up, and there, you know, safety concerns and so.
Yes, so I'm going to get the title of the meeting wrong, Ayesha, it's a safety blank-blank meeting, and I should know it, but I'm, it's late. Um, but it, we, we have been communicating, um, the process, and everybody is aware right now of the crisis communication and, and the process right now. The really next steps would be strengthening the awareness of what it is to families, right? So, we all know what's going to happen, we know exactly, as soon as a crisis happens, what to do, but, you know, do families know that? So, that definitely is the next step, to make sure they know exactly where they're going to hear it and what they're going to hear and when.
That's great, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Matt, did you have something?
Yeah, two, uh, this is great, uh, two questions. The first page you showed breadth of, or the great improvement we've had, you mentioned job opportunities, one of the, one of the top five, I think, the areas, do, what are the other areas that people are most interested in? Do?
School calendar, uh, staff directory, lunch menu.
Definitely the school committee page.
Yes, that's number six. Yeah, it's, it's, it really is all, it's, it's consistently the lunch menus, consistently the calendar and staff directory, um, and that's why it will be helpful to point people to the app, um, because those are just basically buttons and quick links for just those things. So, you could go to the website and you could dive into the menu and have a blast, look at, at all the pages, um, or you could just go to the quick links and, and find what you need. Um, and for dining, that's going to be a blast for parents at 6:00 AM, because, um, with the new platform, it's actually, rather than going to the external website, navigating to the month and then finding the menu, it's, once you click it, the menu is just there in Thrill Share, um, so that'll be a, a definite improvement, and I, I know families will notice that right away.
That's great.
That's helpful, and so really, that actually, and I ju- literally just downloaded the app, uh, five minutes ago, um, and, so it, it is different, the app is different than the website, doesn't have as much, which is, I just want to clarify, am I looking at it correctly, but it, and, uh, so, that's a clarifying question, is it intended to be like, le- less on the app than the website, or am I, I also am not, barely know how to use an app, so.
No, no, that's fine, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's fully integrated with the website, so you'll find the exact same information on the website as you will the app, but rather than have the full menu options of the website, you're just going to have about, um, six or so options for documents, um, staff directory, that kind of thing, and then, um, the live feed that, that begins to populate, whether that's snow day, or like Greg said, look at this cool thing that these kids did today, all of those will also be in the app, just, um, consistently populating, um, and with the app, people can sign up for those push notifications, they can get a notification every time, you know, East Elementary puts something out, um, so that's also like a different feature with the app as opposed to the website, um, but it's fully integrated, you're going to get the same information, just whatever floats your boat, you'll get it.
Okay, thanks, helpful. And then, um, have we thought about or when we might want to resurvey? Because feedback is good, but I also, you know, so is that on a plan at some point?
Yes, definitely. Um, I, I like to compare kind of apples to apples, so we did, um, June 2023, could have done June 2024, um, we did, uh, we did surveys in the monthly newsletter to, to have certain indicators, but definitely putting out that same survey, um, with the new website, I think we waited that two years, just because there, there wasn't a ton of cha-, you know, there, there weren't that many measurable changes, and if I put it out, it, you know, maybe it'd be depressing, but, um, hopefully, June 2025, um, will yield better, stronger results, but yes, definitely.
I think there has been a lot of, I mean, don't sell yourself, there has been a lot of change, like I, you know, just looking at it, but also as, um, yeah, I think in general, just as a parent of, I feel like both the district and the schools are doing a, an improved job of communication, so.
Excellent, great to hear. Definitely a team effort, the, the, um, building principles have really bought into those weekly newsletters, and that's, if, if, if parents are going, or caregivers are going to one location for information, it's those newsletters, um, so it's definitely been huge, and there's consistent, and already with Thrill Share, there's already more buy-in than there has ever been with the website, and folks feel comfortable just because it's an easier platform to update, and they're doing little changes already, so it's a good sign.
I actually think that ability to go into Thrill Share and do all the different platforms from one, you know, one place for them is going to make it so much more efficient and save them so much time, so not only less questions, because the information's there from parents, but less time that they're having to spend to push out that information as well.
Yes.
And more consistency for you, because it's one, you know, one form they're filling out, so it's not multiple times you're trying to enter something and keep it consistent.
Yeah, and there's, there's different levels, you know, our, our uses for the, for Thrill Share, too, you know, parents will get those notifications, but I spoke to our, um, transportation director, um, and he's really excited about the ability to text his staff through Thrill Share, so there's, there's a lot of different uses for this, it's not just website, you know, that's what I'm focused on, but reaching staff through texting rather than the phone tree or, or whatever, um, will, will be a lot more efficient, and, you know, um, it's, and the, it's consistently, all, uh, family contacts and staff contacts are updated every, uh, at midnight every day, um, and refreshed through our SIS system, so it should be up to date, and if people saying, "I don't know what's going on," tell them to read the parent workflow and update the commer tech information, but that will be a consistent effort, I know that's going to come up with folks not getting the texts or that kind of thing, and it's just going to be changing that behavior, swapping out that landline that you probably have on mute for your cell phone.
Okay. Does anyone else on the committee have questions?
We have, um, looks like we have one hand raised on Zoom, so. Ms. Jaclyn.
Hi.
Hi, Jaclyn.
This is, uh, Jaclyn Gopray, um, president of the, um, Hingham Education Association. Um, I just wanted to, uh, voice the concern from staff that, um, looking at the increase in, um, like, uh, messages to the district and some of the Facebook posts, things like that, um, I think our mind automatically goes to past year negotiations, and I think some of that increase was due to messages regarding negotiations, um, and I, I want to voice the repeated concern that staff had that those, that those particular posts and messages seem to be almost weaponized against teachers. So, I think this, some of this increase that we saw, um, was not good for the mental health of teachers, and in the future, I really hope that, you know, we can use the broad messaging like that for positive things, and, um, work that's going to lift everybody up and without knocking others down.
Definitely, I appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn, appreciate the information, the feedback. Is there anyone else online? Nope. Okay. Guess we will make a motion, take a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the update on the 2023, 2024 communications plan.
Second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Can we take out a border of the South, because Tara's here.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure.
I have no problem with that. So, that is number?
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight. Yes, we will move over to seven point eight, which is to approve the naming of the garden beds at South Elementary and act as appropriate. Tara? Welcome.
Well, thank you, first, for, I get to put faces to names, so it's great to be here this evening, and I knew that when we were doing the elementary handbook, and then also Greg was presenting, so I wanted to be here for that, but then knowing that we were also putting forward this request for this evening, so I wanted to be able to stay and speak to that, um, on behalf of the South Elementary School, the families, and the staff members there, so. As you had seen, we had put together a request, the loss of Adelia in the springtime was, um, a huge loss, not only for South Elementary, but for the entire Hingham community, and of course, we wanted to make sure that we were honoring her and continuing her legacy. So, with that, in collaboration with the PTO, the staff members at South Elementary, and the family, to actually take the existing garden beds that are in place at South Elementary, and with funds from the PTO refurbish them, and name them Adelia's Garden, and have a placard on it, and focus on one of the beds being sort of a pollinator garden, because we know that the love of butterflies was there for her, and as a way to encapsulate everything that was really important to her.
Thanks, I think that's a wonderful idea, and as you said, Adelia was, will not be forgotten, and, um, I think it's a great tribute to her.
Yeah, it's, it's been, you know, great working with everybody towards that, coming on, on July 1st, knowing that we had that loss in the spring, um, it's been nice to have all the input from, from those that are there, and just learning about her even more, you know, with each day that passes.
Does anyone have any questions? Anyone online? Okay. You will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the naming of garden beds at South Elementary in honor of Adelia.
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? No? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Tara.
Thank you.
We will move over to item seven point six, which is to review the updated bullying intervention and prevention plan and act as appropriate. Katie Robbins is headed up to the podium.
Thank you. Well, tonight I'll be presenting two plans. The first of which is our bullying plan, which was a collaboratively developed plan. And I wanted to thank some of the members of the school committee who joined us on that bullying committee. So this evening, I'm going to just first start with a kind of an overview and definition of bullying. All right, I'll have you forward if that's okay. Sherry, thank you. So just wanted to start again with the definition of bullying. So bullying as general law. We'll go to the next slide, Sherry. We define this in our annual employee training packet. And we're in the process now of updating that to make sure that we are in compliance with Mass General Law. And so the definition of bullying is the repeated use by one or more students or staff of a written, verbal or electronic expression, or physical act or gesture, or any combination thereof, directed at a student victim that causes physical or emotional harm, causes reasonable fear of harm to themselves or damage to their property, creates a hostile school environment, infringes on the rights of the victim at school or materially and substantially disrupts the education process. Thanks, Sherry. So bullying is, of course, prohibited on school grounds, property adjacent to the school. It is prohibited at any school-sponsored or school-related activities, functions or programs. Prohibited on school buses, bus stops, any other vehicles owned by the district. And also is barred through the use of technology or an electronic device. Bullying is also prohibited at locations that are not school-related if the bullying creates a hostile environment at school and infringes on the rights of the victim to access their education. And of course, in our era today, cyberbullying is something that we have increased attention on. Cyberbullying refers to the repeated use of a digital platform, whether that's social media, text messages, other online platforms in which a student is targeted in some way. So that gives us the definition of bullying. But this data here really centers us on our why. Our students here in Hingham. As you know, we use our youth risk behavior survey, the YRBS data, to really help derive some of our social, emotional and behavioral programming. This is a sneak peek of a more comprehensive presentation that you'll have this fall. So I just pulled out two data points really that relate to bullying, that again centers us on the why we need a bullying plan. The YRBS is currently constructed, the questions kind of blend together bullying and harassment. So, but we can kind of tease out from this that we do have students at all levels who have experienced bullying and harassment, both in person and online. And another data point that I find very interesting, and it's a question that we have previously only asked of our high school students. And I've met with Karen BDR, health coordinator, who is the one that manages our YRBS survey. This question, I think, is an important one and one that I found striking. And that is that only 74% of high school students who identified as having experienced bullying and harassment reported the incidents to their parents or school staff. And we don't have that same question on our middle school survey. But that's one data point that I'd really like to kind of drill down on, make sure that we include that in our middle school survey going forward. And a data point that we should closely track. So in addition to looking at the definition of bullying, you do want to be mindful of the vulnerability of certain populations of students. So part of that Mass General Law does name some of the vulnerable populations. And we're planning to do some goal setting around that. So tonight, really what we're discussing is bullying prevention. So much of our plan will focus on preventing bullying. We certainly also have to discuss the interventions that we take after bullying takes place. But at this time of year, beginning of the year, with hope and optimism, really prevention is going to be the main focus of the presentation this evening. So again, wanted to thank members of our bullying task force, which was an inclusive group that included some central office members, some principals and assistant principals, our director of school counseling and other counseling staff, our nursing coordinator. We had representation from the Hingham Police Department. We had representatives from the school committee and we had representatives of parents as well. And this group worked together primarily on conducting a needs assessment that then was used by the leadership team to craft changes needed to the plan. So again, wanted to thank the members of that committee, and we'll go to the next slide, Sherry. That conducted the needs assessment. So people broke up based on their roles into taking a deeper dive into various aspects of our needs. So we did take a look at our bullying policy and procedures, took a look at our bullying data. And that includes not only the YRBS data, but also some of the bullying data that we report annually to DESI. We took a look at our SEL curriculum, including what is taught in the general education classroom, what is taught in health classrooms and curriculum, what is taught in our digital literacy and computer science classes as it relates to bullying. And we looked really at all of the other programming that we have. We also looked at, in addition to kind of student programming, what additional community outreach and communication are we doing to partner with families and other community organizations? So we did take a look at our Hingham Public Schools website. You heard from Heather Cashman this evening at some of the updates made there. And I'll highlight some of those items as they relate to our bullying plan. Took a look at our counseling website, which is a source of many SEL resources. Took a look at how we're using our principal newsletters to really echo some of the messaging around bullying and partnerships with families. And took a look at some of the community events and partnerships that may not name bullying specifically, but are getting at the themes of belonging and welcoming school environment. And again, very grateful to our partners, including organizations such as Hingham Cares, CPAC and PTO. I'm always hesitant to name organizations because so many have offered some great programming. But those are just, to name a few, that have done some great offerings in the last couple of years. And then one area that we began work on, and it's something that's going to continue into this year, is we did take a look at doing a district climate survey that similar to the YRBS, we use for a variety of purposes. The climate survey that we began work on could be used by the bullying task force. It could be used by the wellness committee. It could be used to inform some of our goal setting around our strategic plan. And so that is going to be a continued area of focus for us this year. So in terms of our bullying plan specifically, we have some ongoing priorities that are kind of annual focus areas as we take a look through the lens of bullying. So we'll, as we have across all of our MTSS initiatives, continue use of student data. So that has been an area of focus for us. So using not only the youth risk behavior survey, but also really drill down into building specific data, really partnering with the principals and assistant principals on this because we do notice differences at different levels of the students who are bullying and the types of bullying that we're seeing, the hotspots where we're finding bullying occurring. We have had a continued review, as Greg said this evening, for his school improvement plan, looking at our tier one SEL behavioral curriculum. And also looking at our digital literacy curriculum for that cyberbullying piece and that digital citizenship piece to ensure that we have a clearly articulated K-12 curriculum to really get at that prevention piece. Other ongoing priorities, continuing that communication, as Heather shared this evening, to not only our parents and community, but really our students. I think we need to continue to remind at the beginning of the year, when we roll out a lot of new information. I do think when it comes to bullying and having not only parents, but also students understanding where to go for help, to continue echoing that messaging throughout the year. We did a lot of, made some great strides in our professional development for our district leaders over the past two years, looking not only at the kind of the legal aspects and our obligations around bullying, but also looking at things like crafting a student safety plan, implementation of best practices with regard to doing investigations around bullying and really taking a look at our reporting and analysis of discipline and bullying data to make sure that we're being routine and consistent across schools. And that work will continue this summer as we continue with our leadership trainings. And the district will of course continue to meet our DESI obligations, which includes that reporting of annual bullying data. And so Tijal Patel has been working on that as we do annually. Three kind of newer focus areas for this year that will relate to bullying, as I mentioned, will be that development and administration of an annual climate survey. And so we're hoping to make that an annual event that will be administered in December. So we made good progress in crafting the survey. But where it is an inclusive survey that is going to serve a variety of purposes, we're going to make one last pass to some of the different stakeholders groups to make sure that we have a climate survey that serves the needs of all of the different groups that will be using that data. As Greg Lamath mentioned this evening, as a district, we will be participating in the SEB Leadership Academy. Wanted to iterate that this is a free resource, accessible to our districts that we applied and were accepted. And in taking a look at some of the offerings and focus areas that we have, as Greg mentioned, we're really hoping to reinvigorate our positive behavior intervention system, really again getting at that prevention of bullying. And this year, our professional development will almost exclusively, some of those early release days is really going to focus on SEL and behavioral health. The last few years, we've had a laser-like focus on academic MTSS. And this year, we are really going to re-center on some of the SEL and behavioral health, which will have a lot of overlap with this plan. And Dr. Cataldo, well certainly as she's speaking about her plans for special education, just a reminder that as part of Mass General Law, that it explicitly articulates that students in populations with students with disabilities are particularly vulnerable to bullying. And therefore, there are provisions for this in the student's individualized education plan. Great. And so just wanted to again highlight a few of the initiatives that we'll be working on this year. As Heather mentioned, with our newly redesigned website, we were thoughtful of making sure that hot buttons were readily accessible. And so you'll see on our landing page that the bullying report form is kind of front and center there. As she said, most people are in there for the menu and the calendar. But by having it in a very visible place, we're hoping that that will again draw some visibility to that. We also have a more elaborate bullying page that has a link to the full bullying and intervention plan and also has a link to the digital bullying form. And as Heather said in her communication plan, one of the areas where we are finding that families are getting their news is from principal newsletters. So we will, on a regular schedule, make sure that we're repeating where to find the bullying plan and where to find that bullying form. So last year, the principals, obviously in September, are putting that information in the newsletter. But to echo it again, at least quarterly, will be very helpful. And so tonight, I'm mostly focused on our prevention strategies, but wanted to assure you that we have also been attending to our intervention strategies after bullying takes place. And so as I mentioned, we've done a lot of work around making sure that we, upon hearing of a bullying incident, to make sure the first thing that we're doing is to implement a robust safety plan for the students. We've worked on, with our leadership team, on how to conduct those investigations, what a determination might look like, and then what the response to bullying is, including following up with students after the resolution of a bullying investigation and really making sure they're putting that on the calendar to follow up with students after the investigation has concluded. Again, wanted to think and highlight some of the community partnerships that have taken place over the last couple of years. Again, anything related to creating a sense of belonging, creating a sense of welcome. It may not have bullying in the title, but absolutely supports all of our anti-bullying efforts. And also just wanted to highlight part of our bullying plan. A requirement is for us to share that there is a DESI problem resolution system. If families feel that they need additional support beyond the district, just wanted to highlight that. But that is an aspect of our plan. And again, just promised that you will have a much deeper dive into the YRBS coming. But I did at the end in the appendix just include some of the, a sneak peek of some of the data that we were taking a look at. So, any questions on the bullying plan?
And committee?
Yes, I have one. So you mentioned students on IEPs and how it's considered as part of the team meetings. In many cases, the team meetings only happen once a year. So is there any, I don't know, procedure in place? So if a student on an IEP is involved in some kind of bullying incident, that a team meeting might be triggered? And maybe Barbara's the person to talk to this, I'm not sure.
Yes, so Dr. Adams is nodding. And so, do you want to take that one there?
Yeah, I just, I think we need to remind, and I think this coming year is a good, we're revising the student services manual for the beginning of school year. And I think that's one of the pieces where we just need to remind, I think after COVID, that's something that we weren't necessarily always doing. But that we need to say, if the student with an IEP has been bullied, that there is potential to reconvene the team.
Yeah, or has bullied too.
Yes, or has bullied, correct. And I think that's one of those procedures that we need to go back to and return and work with the team chairs to make sure that's happening. And close the loop, sometimes the principal and assistant principal know something's happening and the team chair may not. So making sure there's better communication, I think, is something that we need to make sure happens, for sure.
Thank you.
Just one data clarification question. If I'm reading this correctly, I think potentially, I'm either misreading it or the data is flipped. I think that 74% did not report bullying incidents.
Correct. Is that?
It said, yeah, here it says only 74% reported it. And I actually, because when you said that, I was like, wow, actually, I mean, of course you'd want 100%, but I was like, I'm actually surprised it's that high. But it is actually the opposite.
It is the opposite.
Only 26% or whatever it is have reported it. 74% did not report.
Correct. Yeah, so I will make sure to edit that before it's posted on the website.
Okay, that actually goes into my question. So does the YRBS survey, does it go, and I know you're going to go into that at another meeting, but do they have a follow-up question after that percentage on why did you feel that you didn't, that you didn't bully it? Or if it isn't, is that something that could be potentially in a survey to students? I know the climate surveys for parents and guardians, not students. But I'm just one, I'm really curious to know why students are not reporting it.
I do think that, so sometimes a survey is the way to go. But I do think sometimes focus groups with students are also helpful. And so.
I do think that through things like our workshops and advisories, that might be a great forum for asking those kinds of questions.
So surveys are great, aren't as great as getting at why. And so I do wonder if focus groups might be helpful. And again, it might come to just to the lack of awareness. So something said at the beginning of the year, when you are just getting oriented to the school year, you kind of remember information when you need it. And so for the students, who might, you know, do hear in their opening assemblies, I can assure you that the information is shared then, but really until you're in the moment and need that information. So just, I think, some frequent reminders of how to report bullying, who to go to, and kind of more repetition of that information might be one place to start.
And then just one other question, and I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer this, but if I'm a student and I think I may be bullied, but I'm not quite sure that it is bullying or not, who would that student go to to help clarify that without having, if they're not ready to fill out a form, or they're not ready to go to their parents yet, or who would they reach out to?
That's a great question. And really, it comes down to, one of the most important questions that we ask in the YRBS is, do you have a trusted adult? And so everyone in that building working with children, that's why we do the annual training. Everyone from the bus driver to the cafeteria worker, to the para educator, to the educator. So it doesn't just have to be your school counselor. Every adult in the building should know what the definition of bullying is, what the process is for getting a student assistance with filing a bullying report. But any student reporting a feeling of anything less than a sense of belonging, whether or not it is rising to the level of bullying, really the hope is for that student to have a trusted adult to have those conversations with. So it doesn't have to be the school counselor. Any trusted adults in the building should be able to support.
And the percentage of students who report that they do have one is very high. Yes, okay.
No, I have the same question, is do we know why they're not reporting it? Which I think, I feel like came up in another meeting, maybe a subcommittee meeting, that one of the things that came up is students were concerned about if they reported it, they have to put their name on it. So it's anonymous, but it's not, or you have to, you know, report specific names of who's involved. So I think there was some fear from the students, perhaps.
One of the things, I think one of the things too, we heard from students in the Wellness Committee is that a lot of this is happening via technology. So it's not in person. So it's, it's, it's different now. And so it's sort of how do we support the students in understanding that what's happening to you is cyberbullying, and you should be reporting it to an adult, I think is part of the work that needs to happen.
And that cyberbullying starts to, looks one way at middle school, and then it evolves to other things at the high school level. So I think that's the place where, at least in the Wellness Committee, that we've had a lot of discussions with the students with.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, because I think some students don't think, oh, it happened at home on Snapchat. So it doesn't have to do with anything at school, so I can't really report it at school, because, yeah. I think I've just sort of anecdotally, I think as talking to kids who have since left the Hingham Public Schools, I think too, there is some stigma on the other side, like, well, they were kind of my friend or my teammate, and I didn't want them to get in trouble, so I didn't want to say anything. But, you know, and talking to them now as adults, it's like, but, there's just something we have to do to that, right? It's not, it's, it's an opportunity for everyone to understand that what you're doing is wrong, and what's happening to you is harmful. And for you not to report it isn't helping anyone. Or it's not helping you, it's not helping the bully, it's not helping, you know. And so I think that's part of the issue too, that kids are, you know, I don't want to hurt my teammate, my friend, my social studies partner, whatever. So.
Yeah, I do think, in looking at some of the research around bullying, you know, the Tier One curriculum, one of the goals of it is to have students practice kind of that work before they're in the moment. And so role-playing should be a big part of any Tier One SEL curriculum, or part of that role-playing might be, okay, you're in this scenario, who do you go to? And so kind of looking at the Tier One curriculum and make sure that that piece of it is part of, of the curriculum.
Yeah.
Does anyone have, any more questions? Anyone online? Any questions online?
I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the updated bullying intervention and prevention plan.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much, Katie.
Well, I will change costumes.
Move on to the next, next plan. So our next collaboratively developed plan this evening is our District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. And we've alluded to this document several times this year in the course of our MTSS conversations, and wanted to just thank our whole education staff for contributing to this. When I say this was collaboratively developed, literally every educator in the district had their fingers in the pie at some point. And so the way we began, began our work on the D cap was either in departments or in buildings. And we had our educators sharing some of the best practices and accommodations that they already used. And those suggestions really formed the core of this document. And so if you could move to the next slide, Sherry. So first, wanted to just root us in the law that drives a district curriculum accommodation plan. And so this is a mandate by the state that we have a document that demonstrates that all efforts have been made to meet students' needs in the general education setting. So that is the function of this document, and that, again, states the specific law behind it. I don't know the next slide. But really, let's get centered on our why. And it is, our why is that we have diverse learners in our community that we want to thrive in the general education setting. And so this document is intended to help our general educators to assess and accommodate diverse learners, to articulate support services and instructional delivery options available within the general education setting, to recommend interventions for struggling learners, and to identify the resources available to educators in the areas of student support, mentoring, professional development, and coaching. So if this sounds a lot like MTSS, it very much intersects with our MTSS system in that the D cap really is looking at that Tier One and looking at some of the accommodations we can make in that general education setting in order to provide accommodations to students so they are accessing the curriculum. And the D cap very much has overlap with some of our conversations we've been having over the past several years around UDL. And many of the accommodations that live in our D cap come straight from the UDL playbook. So first, wanted to just define for us what an accommodation is. So an accommodation is an adaptation or change in educational environments or practices that helps students overcome barriers to accessing learning. And so through the accommodations, we hope to provide again increased access to instruction. And that may be in terms of instructional strategies, it also might be in terms of testing accommodations. So unlike modifications, which change what the students learn, this is changing the how they're getting there. And so when we're looking at accommodation strategies, educators should be thinking about the strengths of the students, the needs of the students, and really what the barriers are that might be preventing them from meeting the grade level standards, and how we can remove those barriers. And so I will not go through each and every one of the many accommodations, but again, just wanted to share with you how the document is structured. So we did develop elementary strategies and secondary strategies, which have a lot of overlap, but we did tailor the language a bit to be more grade level appropriate. And so for both elementary and secondary, we first looked at social, emotional, and behavioral accommodations that, again, might look like in the social domain, previewing challenging social situations. In the emotional domain, might be looking at things like providing time for breaks and space, a calming corner, taking a look at some of those toolbox tools that we use. Those would very much play into our accommodations for social, emotional behavior. That would be for all. Other behavioral expectations might be looking at things like a check-in, check-out system for students, making sure that we have visual schedules so students are able to predict what their day will be like. The next category of accommodations relate to instructional strategies, and we broke these up into universally designed instructional strategies, which are kind of overarching. But then within some of the content areas, we got a little bit more specific. In literacy, we included some accommodations related to building background and context for students. In reading across the content area, we identified areas such as reteaching key concepts and vocabulary, differentiating the length of reading assignments, highlighting text features, and so on. In writing across the content areas, things like sentence starters, sentence frames, language and vocabulary, having some very similar types of accommodations. Getting into math across the content area, and looking at some general accessibility of material, so providing white space for annotating, for providing audio text when appropriate to a task. We also took a look at various assessment accommodations and strategies, looking at things like the timing of assessments, the setting, different ways to structure the directions, goal-setting, scaffolds and tools, and really looking at, Greg had mentioned earlier this evening, multiple means of representation and expression. And then we took a look at some executive functioning strategies. And so looking at things like graphic organizers, handouts, taking a look at agendas and checklists for time management, attentional cues that students might need. Flexible seating is another one with overlap to SEL and behavior that would also have applications to executive functioning. And then the grade six to 12 D cap accommodations, again, go through a very similar flow. A lot of overlap with the elementary accommodations, but might be referencing different curriculum or tools that we use at the secondary level. And that is our D cap.
Thank you. Any questions?
Maybe, Katie, before any more questions, if you can share what our next steps are with the D cap, sort of to share it out with staff and get further feedback and keep evolving the plan.
Absolutely. Well, starting with our leadership retreat tomorrow, we will be taking a look at this with our district leaders. So again, everyone has had kind of their finger in the D cap pie over the course of the year, but we recently kind of pulled all of the pieces together. So we'll begin with our leadership team this week, and part of our kind of breakout sessions will be about crafting the rollout plan for the D cap. So we'll certainly be kicking that off in our opening faculty meetings. At the secondary level, we have found the work to be best centered in departments, because many of these content-specific strategies have been kind of best discussed at the department level. At the elementary level, we'll be using both our elementary curriculum committee meeting time slots and our faculty meeting time slots for echoing pieces of the D cap throughout the year.
Thank you.
Carrie?
I had one. First, I just want to say I really love the way this is laid out, and the inclusion of social, emotional, behavioral together, because they're so linked. People always say behavior is communication, so I thought that was great. My question is, we've talked a lot about the access of two advanced courses over the years. And so I guess I wanted to ask if a student is benefiting from one or more of the accommodations on the D cap, are they precluded from taking an advanced course? And I was looking, and I was looking at the program of studies, and so in the eighth grade English, for advanced English, they require self-directed learners, I think is how it's worded. In math, student must be able to work and study on their own. And eighth grade science, Level Two is a rigorous and fast-paced course requiring well-developed study skills. There are certain things in there around time management, and would those things preclude a student from taking, how does, would a teacher be considering whether or not to recommend them for an advanced course or not? How does that, how do you balance that with any accommodations that are available for the D cap?
That's a great question. So the answer is no. Any, any of the accommodations, again, are accessible to all students. And so I do think that is an ongoing conversation that we have been having. So in terms of, when we take a look at, I'll give you an example, and that is, one that we've discussed a lot is the concept of extended time. And so there are certain tasks for which time is part of what is being tested. If it's not what's being tested, then it does, it shouldn't impact the student's ability to access that content. And so that will be part of our conversations this year, and how to kind of shift some of that thinking. And so in terms of accessing advanced courses specifically, I do think that executive function is an area that we have not, as a district, provided enough explicit instruction on, particularly at the middle school level. So I do think in our conversations this year, how we embed some of these strategies more explicitly. So when you were talking about time and so on, that really lives in the executive function world. And so we haven't built that as explicitly into our curriculum.
Great. That's great. Well, I'm really happy to see it addressed here too. So, thank you.
That's a great question, Carrie. Anyone else on the way?
No Tim tonight, so the questions have been.
Is there anyone online that has any questions? Does not look like it. Okay. I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the updated district curriculum accommodation plan.
Second?
I will second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up is 7.10, which is to discuss the 2024, 2025 School Committee Meeting Schedule and Act As Appropriate. So this, I believe, is in your packet. I'll just pull it up really quick. So these are, just in, so anyone have any concerns or any conflicts, any of them?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. I do have a question. Are we, do we, well, and you may not know, because the acting chair tonight.
The time?
Well, the time, that is one thing. But also, just are we going to, we should probably talk about the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Because we used to do them on, we used to have the budget meetings separately, and then we started incorporating them into the meetings, which may be why this August agenda is so long. Because I think we pushed some things out. So I don't know if people want to think about that. We don't have to talk about it tonight, but if you want to think about, do we want to keep? And Margaret, I don't know what you and Ayesha think.
This list does not include those budgets. So I think the intent was just to include the school committee meetings.
The regular schedule ones.
And then we'll work on a budget calendar of meetings.
All right. We probably have less, I think, than we'd have like previously. We'd be talking like every Thursday for like five weeks, and we probably could consolidate some of those. But, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, this looks good to me.
All right. Yeah, I'm assuming the time is, will be flexible with the timing. That's why it's not on here. Okay, and this will go up on the website as well. All right.
Keep on waiting for this.
Yeah, they cannot wait. It's all in the hearing.
I'll open it to the, online, if anyone has any questions, but I'm kind of, guess they do not. All right. So we take a motion. Do we approve this?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 School Committee Meeting Schedule.
Second?
Second.
More discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So moving on to, I just lost my agenda here. Just lost it. Let me look it on here. All right. So next up is to approve grants and donations. Ayesha?
We have one grant from Joe Andrews, Director of Technology. He received a grant for $28,500 from the state, from the municipal local cybersecurity grant program that will allow for the purchase of district-provided hardware-based security keys, which will allow us to increase access for staff for second authenticating factors that will improve district and website and email security. You know, when you sign up and you have to put in your email, you put in your You know, when you sign up and you have to put in your email, you put in your password, and then you have to put in the second either phone number or another email, this will allow you, staff not to have to access with their personal devices or a personal phone, personal email, this second authenticating device will allow you to bypass that process. So we hope this will allow us to increase the availability of that second authentication factor for staff as a tool.
The committee have any questions? Anyone online? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the grant from the Municipal Local Cybersecurity Grant Program in the amount of $28,500 for the district to procure physical security keys.
I will second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. It was just that one, so we have to move on to answer, I think, the surplus. 7.12, to approve surplus.
No surplus.
No surplus, okay. Subcommittee and project reports, next. Matt?
I don't have any.
Carrie?
Nothing.
Michelle? Ally?
Yes, we have a policy meeting on Thursday at 1:30, and we are going to be looking at the memorandum of understanding with the Maritime Center and some of the Title IX procedures and policies that Margaret referenced.
Okay. And I have for finance facilities, our next meeting is August 13th at 8:30 in the morning, and we've, and for that particular meeting, we've invited the full school committee to participate. So you would like to join us? At 8:30 am? You weigh?
In person?
In person.
Will there be a Zoom option?
Will there be company?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
That would be great. And then their warrants are in the packet. And next is, other items may not be known for 48 hours in advance of the meeting. There are no 48 hours, nope. And, oh, I also mentioned that the next School Committee Meeting is Monday, August 26th at 6:30 PM. And then item 10 is to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. And I have a motion.
I will make a motion, don't tell me how to do this one. I make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to national law, chapter 30A, section 21A3, for the purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held on July 15th, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
And to discuss a request of food services personnel to join EGA Unit C, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare. Roll call food?
Yeah.
Matt?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. All right, thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon evening.